I call this planning commission meeting of July 25th, 2024 to order. I am Ana Bela Hernandez Mejia and Acting Chair for the Planning Commission. And can I get Rose Paul?
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Thank you. And Acting Chair Hernandez May.
Here.
And I see Commissioner Laston's not here and I have an excused absence from Chair Ellsworth.
All right. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite,
Thank you. Going over to the minutes, are there any additions, corrections, or modifications for June 13th? Been a while now.
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. I'll sign that later. All right, any business from the audience other than hearing items that are shown already on the agenda? No new, all right. Do we have communications from staff?
I don't have any that's not related to a item before you tonight.
All right, thank you. So we're going into public hearings and these are two quasi judicial land use hearings before us this evening and the purpose of such hearings is to ensure that interested parties can offer relevant evidence to the commission in a timely and orderly manner. I'd like to remain remind the commissioners that since these are quasi judicial land use matters, we should maintain an open mind and not make any decisions until after hearing. The hearing is closed and all evidence presented at the hearing has been considered. So with that. Open.
Good idea.
All right, with that, I'm now opening the hearing for CU 2303 or 2403 5 North First Street, conditionally used permit, application to incorporate check cashing and cash transfer services into the commercial property within the downtown development and conservation zone. Before we get into anything, any declarations? So commissioners, is anyone have, has anyone had any ex parte contact with applicant or any other individual?
For me?
Any site visits?
Nope.
All right, any other kind of conflict bias that could preclude you in any manner to making a decision tonight? All right, any challenges from the audience? All right, so staff, could you now read the hearing statement?
Both Oregon law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. And they're short. It's table 2.03A of the Woodburn Development Ordinance and WDO 5.03.01. The hearing will proceed in the following order: staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation with the person which a person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
Thank you. And now staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you see that okay, Counselor Bartel or Commissioner Bartel?
Yes, I can.
Always up in the air when I'm in control here. So I'm taking this over. Our planner Dan Handels out today. He's been out sick for a few days. So I'm going to walk through this application. As described, this is the Plaza Montebon and a request for check cashing and cash transfer. It's a condition, it's a condition of use request, which is a type three approval. You, the planning commissioner, will make decisions on it. Staff report and attachments officially entered into the record. It's a pretty short, simple staff report and presentation as well. The request is for check cashing and cash transfer. This falls under the use category in our code for pond, check cashing, payday loan, and cash transfers, which is what triggers the condition of use approval. It's in the DDC, which is our downtown district, downtown development and conservation district. That's all right. Just to give you some context, it's this property, it's right next to the Los Machetes piece. This property's, the owners currently or the leases currently in the process of renovating the inside of this building to create tenant spaces for a variety of retail businesses. So it's going to be sort of opened up. It's a bit like what you see over at the Metropolis building. So it'd be different tenants inside. They're going through the permitting process for that random building permit process. As part of that, the applicants applied for this condition to use permit to be able to incorporate check cash and cash transfers for the customers. Again, it's pretty simple. Staff has some short analysis and findings included. And just so that you're aware, while there isn't much in our zoning code related to these kinds of businesses, there are a lot of state regulations, pretty highly regulated. I'm sure related to Department of Consumer Business Services, financial regulation, and a couple of ORSs related to check cashing and cash transfers. You've seen a few of these before. I think this is probably the fourth or fifth one since I've been here. Six and a half years or so. So he's come through a few times. We haven't had issues with them. We haven't any need for any additional conditions as they've come in. So these are pretty standard, limited to these uses. What it does do is it says you're not allowed to have pond or payday loans. That's a different use and different regulatory requirements that they have. And there's a cap on number three, which says, because we don't specify when that condition of use would expire. We have a just kind of a standard condition. It says it's three years. If three years go by and nothing happens on the property. I don't have anything else to add. I know the applicant is here. They can answer any questions you have and staff recommending approval with just a few conditions. I have to answer any questions you might have.
So is this like a liquor license? It's, it's just such a two one business or is it that location?
It would be at this location, but I, the liquor licenses are a little bit different. These get approved by you. Liquor licenses just go to the city council.
Any other questions or do we want to have the applicant come up? We're good.
So is it just one, is it one of the, one of the spaces is going to be leased by the check cash?
That, that's correct. My recollection is there's one on the other property anyhow. As I'm recalling back for the property next door, for the other address. And it's, it seems like the same building, but they're different addresses, different owners. They're completely different separated uses. They share a wall.
All right, I'd like to now welcome the applicant for their presentation to the commission. Hola. Puede venir al frente? Do we have a translator?
I did not bring a translator this evening. I didn't think they were going to ask a lot of questions. I thought that might be quick.
Nada más para asegurar porque se ponen el récord. Puede dar ambos su nombre y su dirección, por favor. Mi nombre es Irma Nocedal Vázquez y mi dirección es 15334 en Woodburn Monitor.
Ah, mi nombre es Saul González. Yo vivo en Vancouver, Washington. En la 223 Norris 93 Core, a Vancouver, Washington. Me estoy viendo.
What did they say? I know.
Lo repito. Okay. Estamos iniciando este proyecto. Con este, ya más trabajado anteriormente siempre con la ciudad.
We present, presented this new project before they working before with in the same city in Goodwood. So they trying to do another business. We, they always working with us. Same, I just same name.
You have another one here.
Ah, before.
Oh.
Before. So they, they serve over a new one over here.
And the other one is closed?
Yeah, actually they.
Tuvimos que tenía mi negocio y tuve que venderlo por comprar la propiedad que estoy en Woodburn. Después teníamos el negocio que estaba aquí en el centro, lo vendimos también, pues por eso. Y los chase vendieron la propiedad del primer negocio que teníamos y no tuvimos la oportunidad de tener el dinero para comprarlo. Y en esta ocasión ellos nos dijeron, okay, yo sé que tu sueño era tener tu negocio. Te voy a dar la oportunidad ahora de que inicies de nuevo y te vamos a vender la propiedad. Y entonces por eso estamos como empezando de nuevo.
Ah, that's a mistake on the side.
Sorry.
Es un poquito complicado. No sé si hay más pedidos.
She's gonna, go over to help. Yeah, she's basically saying that she had a business. She had to sell to purchase the property. And so it's kind of been back and forth with the owners. And they really realized that she had a dream of purchasing that building and they gave her another opportunity. So she's basically in this situation because they believed in her and her dreams of owning this business again. So she's going to reopen it up and she was able to work out an agreement to purchase this building. So.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Okay, thank you.
Muchas gracias.
So at this time, I will hear anyone in the audience that has any testimony in favor of the application? Any in opposition? All right, so.
One. But they're in the process of renovating it now without own. Is that what it says? Is that what it means?
Están en el proceso de renovación, pero todavía no son los dueños o sí son los dueños ya de la propiedad?
Estamos, estamos comprando, es toda apenas.
They're in the purchasing process.
But not in the renovating process yet.
Ya están renovando también el edificio?
Yes.
At the same time.
To own type, you mean?
That's great. It's a lease to own. I talked with them before about it.
Okay, thank you. So no need for rebuttal. And so with that, public hearing is closed. I am open, open for deliberations.
I haven't seen anything against it. I guess there's one right next door.
Yeah, so I have two.
Why not? One sells milk, the other sells milk. I mean, it's a product.
Yeah, seems pretty straightforward to me. I think that was.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I'm okay with it.
I have a motion. Thank you, Doug. What's your say?
She agrees.
Okay. I move the planning commission to approve the conditionally use permit application, CU 24-03 for 405 North First Street, subject to the provisions of the staff report. And then a final decision be prepared for the signature of the chair.
Yes, sir. Second.
All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Trying to ask yes?
Yes.
All right. So I will now open the hearing for CU 2401. This is 2115 Malala Road on Oregon Highway 211, conditionally used 2401, design review 2401, and lot consolidation of three parcels through the property line adjustment PLA 2402 for a gas station with convenience store of 4,394 square feet known as US market, plus a car wash on the commercial zoning, general zoning district. Site is along the north side of the highway between Woodburn Place Apartments and the Woodburn Place West Apartments. And it would include three pump islands, six fuel pumps as proposed. So I'll first ask the commission if anyone has had any ex parte contacts with the applicant or other individuals?
Yeah.
Any?
No.
Any site visits? Or other biased conflict? All right. Are there any challenges to the commission?
Thank you.
Question again, are there any challenges to the commission from the audience on the basis of any disclosure or omission by the commission? Nope. All right, so. Can you get the hearing statement, please?
Of course. Both Oregon law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of this here, of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for the land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. Transportation System Plan Figures 2, 4, and 7 and the Woodburn Development Ordinance, WDO 1.02, 2.03, 2.06, 3.01 through 3.07, 3.11, 4.01, 4.02, 5.02, 0.06, 5.03.01, and 5.03.02. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a planned land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open.
Thank you. And now staff report.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Colin Cortez. I'm senior planner at the city. And the item before you is this conditionally use 2401 for a gas station and car wash and convenience store. Malala Road is east of 99E and this area is between two apartment complexes that should be familiar to the commission having been approved in recent years. Woodburn Place and Woodburn Place West. As far as the subject gas station, there's three types of applications. There's the conditional use, the designer use, the development itself of the property, and then consolidation of three lots composing the subject property into one for the development. This package is reviewed type three, which means that you get to decide upon it as a commission. And I'll take a moment to enter the staff reports, attachments, and written testimony received so far until the record. And on that note, do we have three? We have the applicant's letter that came in yesterday. We also have a letter from Concerned Commuter that came in, I think also yesterday. And then the third and final item is from the city's transportation consultant in response to a traffic item that the applicant mentioned in the applicant's letter. And I believe all the copies were put online and also left in the dais for you earlier this evening. The property itself is empty. In fact, it's a staging area for construction next door. Was a rural homestead that was demolished. The gas station convenience store would be almost 40, 400 square feet and it would have a car wash. The land use of the gas station and the car wash, it's a conditional use because the proposal is the WDO words it, the Woodburn Development Ordinance, is that such a thing is conditional if it's within 200 feet of residentially zoned property. And just across Malala Road to the south is residentially zoned property. More about where the site is. This is a citywide black and white map showing streets and parcels. For orientation, the parks are in green, city hall is the reddish shape in the center. And the site is towards the northeast part of the city, colored in green and also the vicinity of it circled in green. It's about halfway between Juneway and Cooley Road on the north side of the highway. The property in the vicinity, along the north side of the highway, are commercial general. And on the right, you see satellite view of the vicinity of the property. This one's recent enough so you can see Woodburn Place Apartments on the east constructed and the construction activity to the west where Woodburn Place Apartments will be. And this is a slightly larger view of the same aerial shots showing the context. As far as existing conditions, more on the ground. This is a view today from Woodburn Place Apartments looking west along the sidewalk. The developer of the first set of apartments was required to extend sidewalk offsite, which is why there's sidewalk there today, which matches the frontages either side of the subject property. So there was additional asphalt, the road was widened, new curb, eight foot planer strip, and an eight foot sidewalk. And based on this existing condition, the one thing that would remain to be done would be to put in lawn grass and street trees. Otherwise, as you can see, the property, there's not much left of it. It is the staging area for construction to the west of the moment. This is an excerpt of the landscape plan, gives you an idea of the site plan as well as the landscaping. You can see essentially one driveway, two points of cross access for vehicles to the east side and north rear of the site. The convenience store is roughly at the center with the pumps in the front to the south. Three islands with six pumps total. Car wash is at the each east attached to the convenience store and additional parking and the drive through entrance for the car wash in the back to the north. This is an excerpt of the architect's elevation views. The top is the south front facing the highway, convenience store is to the left and the garage door to the right is the exit for the car wash. The center image is the view of the car wash on the east side. And the bottom is the view of the building from the north, from the rear. And then this is what the building would look like from the west. As far as process, there was a staff report. It has an attachment called analyses and findings, which examines how the proposal does or doesn't meet various city regulations. And start with a one slide overview. So as I mentioned earlier, the reason the conditional use is required is because of proximity to residential zoning. And the proposal meets the general criteria and factors for conditional use outlined in the code, if conditioned. And staff recommends approval with the conditions in the staff report. I'll take a moment to focus here on the criteria that are excerpted in the staff report and are in the code. And we've also highlighted the staff, underline and bold those of particular interest in terms of conditioning. There's three basic criteria for conditional use. The one that is the most important, one could argue, because it has a lot of factors listed in it in the code, is compatibility with surrounding properties. One of them is the suitability of the property itself. Another factor is impact of the proposal on quality of the living environment. And there are additional items specified for considerations just noise, hours of operation, and vehicular traffic. And then a last factor also calls attention to coming up with suitable conditions of approval to ensure compatibility with the proposed conditional use. And these things provided the animating thrust for the conditions of approval recommended. This summary is copied from the main body of the staff report in terms of what results in the development. The conditions focus on how the development would look in the frontage, basically from the street and sidewalk. It would focused on the architecture of the building. The applicant had agreed to buy some additional window area on the side and the rear, which is reflected in the elevations you saw. There's the condition to have an additional trash receptacle convenient for those walking or cycling to the convenience store. There is some landscaping direction, including a limit on how much of a landscaped area can be something other than landscaping, like bark dust or pebbles or some such. Screening of transformers and similar ground mounted equipment, having a few new evergreen trees among those newly planted. There is a requirement for an architectural wall, which we might discuss a little more later. I mentioned the architecture, avoiding excessive exterior lighting, particularly from the fuel pump canopy. And then basically mitigation of the effects of having a gas station in related uses. One slight summary of things that probably the most discussed this evening, as predicted by staff, would be the condition requires deepening the front yard landscaping and adding three trees. Presently, there are no trees proposed in the immediate front yard of the property. Requiring a buffer screen wall along the small segment of the property, which would be along the approach to the car wash. And a little beyond the exit to the car wash. Limit on how many light fixtures can be on the fuel pump canopy. And then operations, limits on the hours of operation relating to the vacuum facility, the car wash, and the convenience store. So as a concluding summary, staff recommends reasonable conditions of approval for the gas station with the car wash and convenience store to mitigate potential harms or hindrances of the development with an eye not only to the south, to the residences there, but also the residents of the apartments. And as far as transportation, there's one condition for asking for money towards an improvement that was also asked of the developers of the two apartment projects. The commission might remember there was talk of having a right turn lane added to Malala Road, Highway 211 for drivers going west to turn north onto Highway 99E. Those developers paid a fair or proportionate share of that. And so the condition requires this of this developer as well. Oh yeah, thank you. And if needed, I can show some additional slides later. Thanks to our own transportation consultant. Our consultant ended up actually agreeing with the thrust of what the applicant had said. That the essentially the applicant wanted a lower amount of money charged for the fee. Our consultant supports it. And so for that reason, we are deferring to what the applicant's requesting in that regard. And I have a slide that shows what the condition should read if everyone wants to discuss that later. Now we'll pause to see if the commission has any questions. Well, in terms of property lines, it's right next to both properties. In terms of the nearest buildings, in fact, I can use the image on screen to the right. I think the closest ones are these two buildings. These are buildings Q and V in Woodburn Place Apartments. And given that a typical parking space is just under 20 feet, I'm going to estimate that it's about 20, 40, 60, 80, about 100 feet away, the nearest building.
Short of the 200.
If you want to compare it to the distance to the houses and duplex at the south across the road, yeah, it would be closer. Yes. Oh, yes, certainly, certainly. Yeah. There'll be 478 apartments in total. There'll be 478 apartments in total.
So is there entrances from the apartment parking lots into the gas station? Is that where I'm seeing?
Yes, so when the first Woodburn Place developed, one of the requirements was to provide for cross access to this property that we're talking about tonight. And so the applicant is making use of that at the westerly north part. The one you see at the bottom right is optional and perfectly okay with staff.
So the architectural wall, is it on that east side where I see it says car wash by the driveway?
The image in the right, the two red lines indicate where the wall would be approximately. Five and a half feet above grade. That would likely be the case, given that the apartment buildings are three stories, yes.
How far Safeway from there?
Oh, a block and a half, I guess, not quite a quarter mile, I'm not sure, but we can find that out.
Where there is another gas station.
That's true. I mean, I'll go back to the aerial image and that may help us get an idea. So yeah, where the address 1960s indicated, that's the fuel pump canopy for the Safeway over here. And the property is about 100 feet, 50 feet wide, so that distance here gives you an idea of how far away it is. Six times 150.
Just curious, how many of the 478 apartments have been built yet?
Ooh, all the Woodburn Place, the original one in the east is built. I think that's 220 apartments. And then the west for the remainder, I think there's occupancy for about half of the 22 buildings.
So far, already?
Yes, they're building rapidly. Yeah, I'd say more or less.
And 211 is a one way, one lane each way.
That's correct. It's the case today and it's going to remain the case for now.
Any more questions? All right, I would like to now welcome the applicant. I think this should change on, it should be back in the dance. Let me get it set up first.
I guess while we're getting that set up, we do have some. Good evening, my name is Zach Pels. I'm a landes planner with AKS Engineering and Forestry. Our office is located at 3700 River Road North in Kaiser. And that's 97303. We do have, we found out on Tuesday that it's not a practice of staff to provide our complete application to you. So we have that printed. It's a big package of materials, so don't be overwhelmed. We're going to take a little bit of time to walk through it. We just want to make sure that that's entered into the record, just for the sake of being able to make those points in the future if need be. So while we get this pulled up, I guess, it's already pulled up. We're going to hand those out to you real quickly and you can have those, we'll reference those there. All right, so read through that real quickly.
I seem to be off.
Like I said, there's references in here to some of the stuff we'll be talking about tonight. We're going to cover it in our presentation, so don't be overwhelmed. I think I want to start off by just thanking staff. We worked really closely with staff since we've had our pre-application back in March, I think, is when when that was. And it was because of the close collaboration we've had with staff that we're kind of here with, with the application that we're really proud of and that we think really complements the adjacent uses. And we'll kind of walk through that in detail with you tonight. The applicant is INE Construction and INE Construction is also the owner of those adjacent properties next door.
If it's not working, I can advance for you.
Got a lot of little transitions, I wonder.
So it may work. Let's try that.
Give it a buck.
I have to copy the presentation first.
It's, yeah, we'll drop that on the, there you go, on the desktop. So while he's doing that, we do have our complete team of project staff and experts in the house. Now we've got Michael Minor with, who's our noise consultant, Kirsty Hauswald is our landscape architect who's in the house. We've got our civil engineering team, we've got the legal consultant and we have our traffic engineer. So we're hopeful that any questions that you all have tonight, you're willing and able to ask us before the close of the testimony so that we can make sure.
Sorry, I missed your name.
My name is Zach Pels. Thank you. Let's go. Give it a try. Jungle this way. There you go. All right, that's right. Don't just advance it for me. All right, so you can, Colin, you can skip ahead a couple, please. Can you hear me okay if I'm this far away from the mic? All right, so here's our, here's our team of folks in the house tonight. Like I mentioned, next slide, please. So we really want to cover just a few key things. The majority of our presentation is going to talk about the items in our letter, namely just really some small tweaks that we want to ask you to make to those conditions of approval that are included in the staff report. So we'll start off by going over a quick overview of the site. We'll talk a little bit about the, your decision tonight in the context of this conditional use. And then we'll leave it for some questions for you. Next slide, please. We talked about where the site is already. We're just east of the intersection of Highway 99E and Malala Road, northeast of Safeway and the Safeway Gas Station, next slide. We also talked about this, but I think this is important that, you know, we, our site is located in an area that is predominantly commercial and industrially zoned. There is that area of RM zoning, which is a residential zone to the south of the site. And I guess the important thing to note is that the code allows convenience stores, gas stations and car washes outright in this commercial zone. It's not a conditional use unless it's within 200 feet of a residentially zoned property. So I guess just, just to be clear, those apartments next door to the site are not residentially zoned. And that, those properties aren't what causes us to meet that threshold for conditional use. It's only those residentially zoned properties at the south that cause us to be reviewed under this conditional use. And if you advance the next slide, you can see that there's really only one portion of our site and it's this area shown in blue here that is within that 200-foot buffer. And so we've got this image here showing that 200-foot setback from that RM zone. And really what, what element of our site that's in that 200-foot buffer is the gas station. The convenience store and the car wash are not. And so therefore the convenience store and car wash are not subject to the conditional use. Next slide, please. So what's the difference between a conditional use and a use permitted outright? Essentially the same thing. And you'll see in the next slide, the criteria are really that the use meets all the applicable development code criteria. And the second thing is, which is what differentiates the conditional use from a permitted use, is that the city can apply conditions as necessary to mitigate for potential impacts from its use. And that, that authority does not exist for uses permitted outright. Next slide, please. But the code, we can go to the next slide. The code does provide some guidance for you in determining what compatibility means, right? Colin talked about it. It's the size and location of the property. It has to do with capacity of the city's public infrastructure. And it also has to do, and this is the big one, with, with potential impacts to the surrounding environment. And this is what we'll spend our time talking about. Unfortunately, your code also talks about what, what you need to consider when you're determining impacts. And if you flip to the next slide, please. And Colin pointed this out in his presentation also, there's really this handful of six factors that you can use to determine whether there are potential for impacts from our use on those adjacent residentially zoned properties to the south. And if there are, you are authorized to add conditions to mitigate for those potential impacts based on these factors. It's really important to point out though, that the, your consideration of those factors is relative to the zoning district as a whole and uses that are permitted in the general commercial zoning district. When the city council adopted the GC zone, the CG zone, excuse me, on this property last year, probably one of the biggest considerations that they made in applying that zoning district was whether this zoning district would be compatible with surrounding uses. And they agreed that it was. And as part of that analysis, the city council considered all of the allowable uses in that zone. And those, those allowable uses are things like restaurants and bars, grocery stores, pawn shops, they're listed here. Liquor stores, movie theaters, bowling alleys, uses that have a lot of impacts. So I think the bar for you or the bar for your decision in considering whether there are conditions necessary to mitigate for impacts from our site should be considered relative to impacts from other uses that are allowed in that zone. Next slide, please. Real quickly, we're going to walk through our site. Your staff did a good job of talking about this already. And Colin, if you just want to kind of cycle through these, I just want to show real clearly where everything is. And so we got the convenience store in Colin, you can just click, there's a little highlighted box on each of these. So the convenience store at the center of the site, the car wash, just to the, just to the right of that along the east property line. Here's a quick image showing what those are going to look like. I think one important thing here, and that, you know, one thing that we worked hard with staff to come up with was a, was an architectural theme for the site that was compatible with the adjacent apartments. And you can see here, and if you're familiar with the, the style of the apartments next door, that we've borrowed exactly from that style, right? So it, so it really fits in with the existing uses next door. Next slide, please. This is just a rendering showing what it's going to look like at night. Next slide. So we've got some vacuums that will support the car wash at the north. Next slide. The gas station is at the south side. And I think the next couple of slides show some renderings of what that will look like. And this is looking north from the driveway at Malala Road. Again, you can see in this slide, you can see at the right side of the screen, a rendering of what those existing buildings on the apartments at the east look like. And you can see that, that architectural style is copied onto the site. The other thing you can see here is that we've kind of gone to great lengths to make this canopy cover also match that. So it's not just the standard flat fueling island canopy like you're used to seeing. We, we've agreed to kind of go above and beyond and make this look a little more attractive and, and fit better with the surrounding uses. Next slide, please. Colin, you can just keep going. We've got good pedestrian connectivity throughout the site from Malala Road north and then east and west. That was one thing that was important to staff. We worked hard to, to work that out. And believe it or not, it was, it was a little bit tricky to do that on the site. It's, it's actually pretty tight when you try to get all these different elements on there and the appropriate turning movements for everything. So we're, we're pretty pleased with how this turned out. And then the final big piece is the perimeter landscaping. This is really another big attempt to kind of soften the transition between the abutting uses. And we'll talk about it in a minute. We, we sort of disagree with staff's position on this architectural wall. We think this landscape screen provides a better transition between the adjacent uses. And if you flip through the next slide, this is a, a rendering showing the screening along Malala Road as viewed from Malala Road to the north. And you can see that there's a pretty significant screen there. And it, so those four trees that are kind of at the foreground, there are, will be trees that we'll plant in the public right of way. Colin showed you that slide where the sidewalk was already built and there's that, there's that planar strip that's just ready to be planted. These trees will be planted there. And then that row of hedges behind those trees will be planted on our site. And so that kind of dual setup of trees and hedge screen provides good screening while also still allowing some surveillance in and out of the site. Next slide, please. Here's a view of our site from both the east and west. And you can see again, we've used a lot of, a lot of shrubs and trees to really break up the view between those adjacent uses. Next slide, please. Here's just a couple more renderings of what the site will look like at night. Again, kind of low level lighting to make sure that impacts to those surrounding properties are minimized. And I mean, this gives you a good idea of how the site fits in, in the overall context of those existing apartment buildings. And we'll talk more about that, I guess, as we go forward. Next slide, please. So, you know, like I said, we're, we're almost entirely on board with staff's recommendation. There's, there's some changes and we pointed those out in the letter that was submitted to you today with relatively small changes that we would like you to make that we think actually result in a better project. We think that, like I mentioned before, removing the wall in favor of an architectural screen provides a more attractive, a less kind of maintenance-heavy improvement on the site. But we also think that there's a handful of conditions of approval that are redundant and that, that really respond to things that we're already doing. And we've talked with staff about that. And I guess what staff has explained to us is that they're just concerned that in the event that we want to make provisions in the future, those conditions are in place to make sure that we don't do that without going through some process. But there's already a condition in, in, in the approval. It's, it's condition G2 that says any change requires a new review with the city. So we think that's redundant. But what we've seen in the past is that we've got this approved set of plans that is, is really clear on what's been approved. And when there's additional verbiage about what that approval entails, that just creates the opportunity for confusion. So really what we're asking for is that where are those conditions aren't necessary to implement something that we're already doing, that you, that you just remove those. And so we're going to run through these pretty quickly. And in fact, I guess if you have questions as we go through these, feel free to interrupt, interrupt me. It's probably easier to do it that way than to try to save your questions for the end. So if you want to go to the next slide, Colin. Okay, let me catch up here, my notes. this first condition has to do with, and I think we might have misunderstood staff on this. I think what we understood this condition to say was that we needed to reconstruct the sidewalk to match that adjacent sidewalk. It didn't sound like that was the, that was the request from Colin when we went through. We, when we read this condition, we understood that we needed to kind of bump that north edge of that sidewalk a little bit to the north and then add street trees. We're definitely going to add street trees. That's a redundant thing. We ask you to remove it just because we are doing that. If it is the case that we are being asked to move that sidewalk slightly north, which is shown in that kind of light gray hatch, you can see that it doesn't quite exactly line up with the sidewalk on the west. It kind of, it kind of shifts just a little bit. We would prefer not to do that because like you saw in that slide from Colin, that, that sidewalk is brand new. And it would require removing and replacing that. Next slide, please. This condition here has to do with two things, I guess. And these are, these are, these are conditions on two different slides. The first one would ask that we extend this front yard area as far north as the area shown in green on the slide here for the purpose of planting some additional trees on our site behind that row of street trees that we were talking about. We would like to ask you to delete that condition of approval because, really because that kind of chews into this vehicle circulation area that we have shown on this plan. So if you can see here, we've got this, right now, we've got this 29-foot wide two-way vehicle circulation area on the south side of our fueling canopy between, between the curb on our site and the fueling canopy. That would, that would push that area slightly north and kind of limit the vehicle maneuverability in that area. And I guess in addition to that, we think that that row of street trees, along with that hedge that we talked about just a minute ago, provides a sufficient screen to really relieve us from the need to provide those, those few additional trees behind these street trees. So that's that request. Next slide, please. Again, here is what, here's what our proposal looks like. We've got these four street trees in front of We've got these four street trees in front of a screening row of hedges on our site. And again, the purpose for that street tree standard would be to provide screening. We think that our proposal adequately does that. Next slide, please. This condition of approval asks that we lower the height of the fueling canopy by about a foot and a half. The current plan shows that canopy at 16 feet. Staff is asking that we lower that to 14 and a half feet. We've actually lowered it once already at the request of staff from 20 feet down to 16 feet. And we don't think that that additional foot and a half height reduction has any real benefit to mitigate for aesthetic impacts or lighting impacts. And for that reason, we think that that condition can be deleted. The next slide just shows what that fueling canopy looks like at 16 feet in height. If you want to flip to that next slide, please. Yeah, and you can just see it's pretty standard. The non-standard thing about it is that kind of more architectural roof style. So staff's condition would kind of reduce that interior height by about a foot and a half. Next slide, please. This condition, this is C U A A. There's a, this prohibits the use of neon lighting on the site, which we're fine with. That's pretty common in other cities' codes. There's a sentence in there that we showed here is struck out. It says neon lighting is prohibited, but also any lighting technology that mimics the appearance of neon lighting. And what we don't like about that is it's just really subjective. It's been our experience that when there's language like this in conditions of approval, when we go for a building permit, the person on the other side of the counter has to determine what is similar to a neon appearance, right? And we just don't think that's necessary to leave that in there. There's really no other clear guidance in the code about what something is that mimics the appearance of neon lighting. So for that reason, we prefer that that section be struck.
Excuse me, why would they even mention it? There was no thing that looked like that mimicked it.
So, so one thing that I'm thinking of, so, you know, we all know what neon lighting is. It's that tube, kind of tube style lighting with, that's neon colored, right?
Light itself.
It's the light itself, correct. But I think that it's unclear to me, what is something that mimics the appearance of a neon light? Is it something that's even just a neon color? If we have a sign that's a neon color, would that mimic the appearance of a neon light? If we had a sign that had some sort of kind of tube type shape, that was not a... Those are kind of the questions that we would have, and I think that somebody at the city would also have when reviewing an application.
No, but I'm questioning why they would even mention it if they didn't know of something that would mimic it.
So that's a question for staff?
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, I'll make a note of it. What I'd like to do is let the applicant run through all the conditions to be discussed, and then the staff will address each issue in turn.
Yes.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So condition C U seven, we've talked a little bit about it before. Requests that we install an architectural wall in the area on the image at right here in that red dashed area. You know, we simply think that a vegetative screen in that location does a better job of screening the site from adjacent uses. We think it provides kind of a softer transition between those adjacent uses. And I think, I guess, two other important things. One, it's not prone to graffiti like the wall would be. It's a lower maintenance liability, and for that reason, it'll look better longer. And I think finally, I think it's shown on the next slide, Colin, if you want to flip to the next slide, please. A vegetative screen allows you to sort of, it's sort of opaque, right? It allows you to sort of see through it partially. And I think there's a lot of, you know, new research and even new kind of practice in the planning profession that suggests that in situations like this, we need to provide opportunities for informal surveillance is what it's called. And that's a way to promote safety between sites, right? If we can see what's happening on other sites without some sort of solid barrier, that's just a way to promote safety. And so we think for all those reasons, a vegetative screen is just simply superior wall. And we'd ask that you allow us to move forward with the wall, excuse me, the vegetative screen in lieu of the wall. Next slide, please. So this condition asks that we prohibit any audible advertising from field pumps. You've probably seen in some of the newer gas stations that there's little TV screens built into these gas pumps. Not advocating for that, but I think that relative to the noise impacts that are generated by those advertisements, if the applicant chooses to install those types of pumps, we don't think there's any real measurable impact from the noise generated by those facilities. And in fact, on the next slide, we'll kind of walk you through what our noise analysis shows here. And so we've submitted a noise analysis as part of our application. Michael Minor is on the phone. He's available to answer any questions you have that are noise related. And he prepared this document for us. The image at the left shows the existing noise condition as of this year. And the image at the right shows the post-development noise condition after our site is developed and with the facilities that we are proposing on our site. And that legend on both of those images is probably impossible for you to read. But essentially, the darkest purple are the loudest noises and the darker greens are the lowest level noises. And you can see, yeah, yes.
We come up with what is going to be in a year from now, and it just almost looks practically identical.
I'll let, I'll let our, I'll let Michael respond to that in just a minute. But essentially, he will, and he spent a lot of time understanding all the different noise generating sources on our proposal. And he's got a way to model that as part of this graphic here. And so maybe we'll save, Michael, maybe if you want to make a note of that as we conclude our presentation, you can jump in and respond to how you go about developing this. But I think there's a couple of big takeaways here. One is that you can see in both the existing condition and the post-development condition, the biggest source of noise on this site and on the adjacent sites is from vehicle traffic in the Malala Road corridor. And that's really not a huge surprise. The other thing you can see, and this is on the image at the right, is that the addition of that gas station and the fuel pumps in that area, it doesn't really change the color of that purple, right? So that is sort of our evidence to support the fact that we don't think that there's any condition that's necessary to mitigate noise from those fuel pumps. So for that reason, we'd ask you to delete that condition. Next slide, please. So this condition asks that we relocate the air station, which I showed you was at the kind of the southeast corner of our site to the rear or to the north of the property. And then to limit the hours of use for the air station and the vacuums to mitigate potential noise impacts from the air station. And what we're going to see on the next slide, and similar to the previous slide, is that noises from the air station are really negligible. There's really no need to mitigate for them because they're just not a significant noise source. The vacuums are a significant noise source, and they're located at the north of the property. The vacuums aren't subject to the conditional use review because they're outside of that buffer. But the city has a noise ordinance that says we can't generate noise in excess of a certain decibel level past 9pm. And so we have to honor that. We've acknowledged that in our application. That condition is really just unnecessary because that's already covered by your noise ordinance. So that's, we're asking you to remove that again because it's redundant and because we want to avoid confusion down the road. We would ask that that be removed. Next slide, please. In this, this again.
Sorry, I'm not sure why you keep asking for things to be removed because they're redundant. Why would it matter then? If they're already in there and you're already doing it, why remove it at all?
Yeah, like, so I mentioned, I'm not sure if you heard me at the beginning, but like I mentioned, we do applications like this all the time, and we get applications approved with conditions of approval that respond to things that we are already doing. The problem is that the person that reviews our building permit is not the same person that approved our land use application. And there's often differences of interpretation in that language. And I think just to avoid those complications as we get through the building permit stage, we would like to keep this as clean as possible. And that's really the simple reason. Next slide, please. So this condition asks to limit the hours of operation for the convenience store for those same reasons before, to limit noise impacts. Again, the convenience store is not subject to conditional use, and therefore the code doesn't really support a condition to limit hours here for noise impacts. But more importantly than that, and as we'll see on the next slide, the convenience store doesn't really generate any measurable noise to be mitigated for. So we don't think that's necessary. But beyond that, and I think what's important, and this is something you've probably talked about as a planning commissioner recently, this convenience store is within, you know, very convenient walking distance of nearly 500 new homes, right? So 1,000 plus new residents. And some of those residents are probably going to work late at night or get home from a job late at night. And I think that would be a really nice thing for them to be able to get some milk, get some eggs, whatever else they might want to get at this convenience store during those off hours. And again, because there's really no need to mitigate for any of the noise impacts or lighting impacts, we think that that condition to limit the hours is just not necessary. Next slide, please. Again, this slide is just showing that the convenience store is not really generating any measurable noise. I guess real quickly, what you do see here is a big purple blob in the vicinity of the vacuums. And I didn't mention that when we were talking about the vacuums. I told you that they are a significant noise generator, but you can see that on the slides. So I guess I'll just use this opportunity to point that out.
So I don't know where the vacuums are.
So Colin, can you give me a hand here? So at the far north end of that drive aisle, yeah, there's going to be a few vacuums right up there, right? And that's why it's all purple there. It's also purple there because that's where the car wash is at, right? And the car wash does generate a lot of noise. The car wash is also subject to the same city noise ordinance, same hours of operation will apply to the car wash. Next slide, please. This condition provides specific detail on where we should locate trash cans on the site. And that's not, that's not the large kind of trash cans for the kind of the site of the whole. It's trash cans for patrons kind of using the convenience store. We would ask the planning commission to delete that for a couple of reasons. One, we think that that's just something that's better determined by the operator of the site. It's in their best interest to keep the site looking nice and tidy. But the second reason is that the convenience store, again, is not subject to the conditional use review. And we don't think that there's any code support for that condition. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're getting close to the end here. These last, I guess, these next few slides have to do with striping the circulation for the fuel pump area. So providing kind of directional striping for folks entering the site from Malala Road or from those access points to the east or to the north of the site that direct people to enter into the fuel pumps in a certain direction. We think staff is well intentioned here, and we think, we know staff's intention was to limit the backup onto the adjacent properties or onto Malala Road. But we think this will actually have the effect of increasing that queue. And if you want to flip to the next slide, you can see here, so we've got these, basically, these yellow boxes are all the fueling positions kind of resembling what a car would do there. But then kind of in those faint red arrows next to those boxes, that shows kind of how that striping would direct cars to enter in from one way or the other. And the problem with that is that, you know, depending on the make and model of your vehicle, you might have a gas tank on the right side or the left side. And that might mean, depending on where you enter this site, that there could be one of those vacant, one of those fueling positions vacant that you can't access. And because of that, we think that that's going to cause cars to back up more so than if we just left it striped, how we have it in those kind of gray areas where it's two-way circulation. You can enter and exit kind of as you typically would at a normal gas station. So for that reason, we think it's in the best interest of everybody to eliminate that condition. Next slide, please. Same thing, skip, next slide. And finally, we already talked about this. We agree with staff on this, and this was supported by the city's traffic consultants. We don't need to go into any detail on this one. And I think this next one is the last slide. Nope, next one, please. Yeah, and so this, about a dozen conditions of approval, again, not to beat a dead horse here, but these are all conditions that just either ask for things that we're already doing or actually ask for things that require us to be in compliance with things that we're not even asking for. And so there's just some boilerplate conditions on there that speak to things that we're not even planning to do. Again, just a cleanup item. So that is our presentation. Thank you for bearing with us. As you can see, it's a lot of just kind of cleanup stuff. Again, we do this a lot, and we often kind of run into hurdles when it comes time to get to the building permit stage of thing as there's a new group of people reviewing those plans. And I think it's just to help us move through that process more quickly and to avoid folks scratching their heads when we get to that stage, we respectfully request that you remove those conditions of approval. And I guess with that, we will open it up to questions. I guess to start, since there was a question about the noise already, would you like us to elaborate on that noise modeling and how we kind of go about?
With it.
Yeah, so Michael, would you mind taking a few minutes talking about how you develop that noise model and?
And if you could state your name and address, please, to Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael Minor, 4923 Southeast, 36th Avenue in Portland, Oregon. I'm a noise consultant working on the project. Can we bring that slide back up?
What slide number was it?
You know, is it, can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Oh, yeah.
That might work out better. Then I can point to it, see. Forty, forty. Wait, share, is it sharing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So apparently you're saying this is a traffic noise only. So this is basically just the traffic on Walla Avenue. And as you can see, these, it goes in stages as it goes away from the highway. This first blue line right along here, and it also mimics this blue line on the other side of the highway. And then the next blue line is like two or three decibels quieter, another two decibels quieter. So as you get further and further away, it gets quieter. The buildings themselves tend to block the noise. So the reason you get this little V here is because this traffic noise can no longer get over here. It's just this traffic noise. You end up getting this little pinch point here. And then behind the buildings, you get the green spots.
Excuse me, Michael?
Yes.
Are you indicating something? We don't see any pointer on the screen. This is the gas.
I got a better way to. Screen. Way to make a bigger arrow, just. Yeah, it's hard for me to point this out, then. Hold on, let me. Give one second here, it'll be. Yeah, I can't figure out a way to make that mouse any bigger. Okay, well, I guess I'll have to kind of fumble through this. Pardon me? So. I guess I can fumble through this a little bit. If we start to look at this one building over here in the corner, just for an example. Of how the sound propagates back through the neighborhood. The can you see my little cursor there? At all?
No.
I got hold of it. I have an idea. I have an idea. Okay, now it's a big red circle.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So this building, for example, in the model, it actually blocks noise. That's why the little the the noise contours tend to come down over here. And then to go back up. On the other side of the building and in between these houses on this side of the road, but you can see there the the noise travels less and less and then. Behind the houses, it's green where there's no noise at all. So the model takes into account for the ground coverage, the the location of the buildings and the noise source. When we were looking at the the second. One where you had this big glob of noise back here by the. See here. This noise over here. This comes from two sources. One. Is. The rear end of the car wash. Which is right in this area here. And the other one over here is from the two vacuums. So it's a combination of both the vacuums and the car wash. And that car wash noise is from the blowers. Which are located at the other end of the car wash, but some of that noise transmits through the tube and comes out this end. But most of the noise from the blowers ends up increasing the noise around the pump area. And a little bit under the highway, but not much across the street. So most of the noise is still contained within the site. Does that help unders?
How do we know it's contained within the site? Where? Because are those buildings to the left and right? Are those apartment buildings?
Okay, this building here. That is the office building for the apartment complex. So it's not, nobody lives there. They do have a on the backside of the building away from the car wash, they have a shared use area. And there's like a little park area which is. Back over here in this area. This is is a swimming pool right here. Now, the apartment complex of the actual buildings here. The backside of the building inside here, this little courtyard area, that's where the balconies face. The front part here is where they have parking and then stairs to their front door. But the backyard is out here. That's so that's the outdoor area of the apartments. And for these ones up on top. The outdoor area is the back part here. So nothing faces, no outdoor use spaces towards the towards the car wash. Or the gas station. On this side. These apartments, again, they have the parking on this side here and they and the. The decks are located in the backside over here. So again, the decks do not face towards the towards the car wash. They're all on the inside of the building and structure.
And I guess one other thing I'd like to just add is that, you know, those two significant noise sources that Michael just pointed out, the vacuums and the car wash. Again, those will be limited hours of operation because of the city's noise ordinance. So they won't be they won't be allowed legally to operate past nine P M. And so any of the impacts to those adjacent uses is gone after nine P M.
But even the clock is late. People eat dinner. They, you know, want to relax and, you know, take an easy after work.
But I think again, the question, you know, the question for you is, is that? Is that amount of noise that should should be expected or not in this vicinity, right? Like you can see. Just the significant amount of noise from the traffic alone, right? So. When people choose to live here in these apartments, they're they're already moving there. With the knowledge that that noise source exists, right? And I think.
There's been a significant increase in noise in this city in the last two or three years with all the building. So I know a road like Malala, which has one lane each way. Has significant noise. And then to add to it. There's no way to mitigate those those vacuums unless you, you know, limit the hours of operation.
Agreed. And I and I mean, I guess I would put back on you that I. I believe that's why the city has a noise ordinance that that tries to come up with a reasonable time, which the city has decided is nine P M, right? And so that's 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 related to, you know. How long you can do construction on your home or when you can operate a leaf blower in your yard, right? Like those, that's sort of the. Kind of the compromise the city has come up with regard to those kind of louder noise sources.
Did you say when you introduced yourself that I and E construction is building the apartments?
Correct.
All both both sets?
Yep. Are there any other questions for me or anybody else on our team?
With your other projects, we do guys the same team for the apartment complex.
We were not, we didn't work on the apartment project, actually.
I was just gonna ask if you guys had any difficulties when the second phase. Of the permitting process, just. Based because as soon as I got to your fear is moving this on and right. And so I was wondering if you guys have had. Something else, a project that you guys maybe have gone through this where you're like, I've done this, it's good. So.
Yeah. So, no, we didn't work on this project. But like I mentioned, we work on projects like this, multi family projects, all all manner of land development projects across the state and Washington. We often encounter. I won't say problems, but there are just disagreements in interpretation of those conditions when it comes time for the issuance of building permits. And it's really just because, you know, one one person's take on how something is written is different than what that person intended or the way it was written. Didn't quite capture all of the nuance, right? And those little things can lead to big delays and. All the things we're talking about here are, you know. Pretty minor things, but we just like to keep it clean for the sake of trying to avoid avoid any problems going forward.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, aren't those the same things that the city inserts so that it keeps things clean for them? And while it may not follow your particular guidelines in every development you do in all of the different areas you do. These may be things that are important to the city of Woodburn and how developments is brought forward here. So I'd kind of like to hear from Colin and Chris on that.
Yep.
We're. We'll continue first with the rest of the testimony, correct? All right.
Maybe if I could just really quickly respond to that. And is Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
There is a condition, if you look at the staff report, it's G two. And and that condition. Says that the applicant or successors and assigns shall develop the property in substantial conformance with the final plan submitted and approved with these application. With these applications, except as modified by these conditions of approval. Were the applicant to revise plans other than to meet the conditions of approval? Even if the planning division staff does not notice and signs off on the building permit. Division staff retains the right to obtain restoration of improvements as shown on an earlier land use review. We think that that sufficiently captures staff's ability. To to enforce compliance with our approved plans and therefore. I guess in my opinion, and and and, you know, staff can respond to this too. But in my opinion, that sufficiently captures that.
Waste a lot of time with that W D O, I guess.
Is there further testimony in favor? Of this project?
Another question. The convenience store, when there's a Safeway down the street. I mean, they're open until at least midnight. So if anybody wants a snack or to pick up something. You know, they have that. So, you know, you're sort of a duplication of Safeway and their their gas station.
Yeah, I think the, if if I may, I know you moved on to. The difference is that. We're literally next door to to these 500 new apartments, right? So any of these residents in these apartments can easily walk down and grab something here, whereas that's not quite as easy to walk over to Safeway, right? I mean, it's not only is it the traffic, but it's a little bit further. So I think it's much more convenient for the residents of our site. You asked a question earlier about the need or or at least alluded to the need for a gas station on this site because there's a gas station at Safeway. One big benefit of having a gas station here is that it really relieves some of the pressure on that Safeway gas station because it eliminates the need. For cars to stop in that middle lane and turn left, right? They can pull into our site and use our gas station and continue on. The same is true for folks headed eastbound. They can just head into the Safeway gas station and go on. So I think they're kind of complimentary. They're not, I mean. They will be competitors, but I think there's enough demand for that fuel to go around.
And Safeway is very.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think so, too.
All right. Are there any other questions? If there is no more testimony in favor, I will open up for any testimony in opposition. All right. So no need for rebuttal in this case and. Any questions? Or we did have questions, actually. Other.
I know all three of us staff would like to speak. I'll go first. So I wanted to address the applicant's talk of what are described as the redundant conditions. And I'll describe it in the way based on staff's past experience with projects generally on the very issue. The purpose of the substantial performance. Condition, along with the very other specific conditions, is to avoid a situation like what I'm about to describe. Which is if the specific conditions didn't exist. And the project continued to pass on to other people like a building contractor. And the time came for the permit. Staff might find the drawings are different. And so staff would be talking to the person who applied for the permit, saying, hey, you need to do these things. We had a zoning approval. It'd be like, where does it say in the code I have to do that? Well, it doesn't say in the code, there's a substantial conformance thing. And from the contractor's perspective, it will be whatever it is I want to do, you will find to be not substantial. So go ahead and approve when I approve, because unless you can point to something that will legally force me to do it, I'm not going to do it. Here's the plans. That has come up quite often, which is why staff has gotten to the customer writing the substantial conformance condition and the specific ones. To take two, for example, there's one about electric vehicle parking. The site plans do indicate the minimum required number of spaces with E V. However, the codes have some additional standards, the voltage level of the charging station. The specific size of the sign for the spaces, the striping for the spaces, that information is on in the materials, which is not a big deal. The staff can handle that at the building permit. If the condition that says, hey, don't forget, when you get your building permit, you have to give us the rest of this information so you can get the building permit. The problem is if it's not there, then we have to argue with the person who applies for the building permit. And then the other example is a trash enclosure. So there's none proposed. The applicant wants to make use of the enclosure at the Woodburn Place Apartments. Nothing against that. Staff does believe that what could happen is that there might. Arise disagreement between property owners or the arrangement doesn't work for some reason. And so the gas station operator will want to have outdoor storage of trash on this property. Which by the W D O would require an enclosure. And so it's helpful to have the condition to notify parties that are aware of this. Development that, hey, if the situation changes, you need to conform with the code. So even if there's not a trash enclosure proposed, it's helpful to have a condition to inform parties. And for staff to have something to say, yes, you do need to have an enclosure because the circumstances changed. And with that, I think the director has a few words.
Just real quick, just to kind of follow up on what Colin was talking about, these sort of redundant or belts and suspender conditions. That are in there. We try not, we're not, we're not trying to put in overly detailed conditions or things that'll trip us up or future developers. Again, we found our experience, I know it might be different from the applicants, is that these do come up and the ones that we've left in there, we've removed some. Tried to whittle them down where they aren't necessary. But again, the the trash shelter one is is a good example of what usually happens is. The person sitting in the room here and that followed this from. Day one or the applicant isn't the one who builds it, right? It's a different person down the line. It's the. Third person that buys the property three years from now. And then there's a new owner for the apartment complex. Who wasn't a party to this or a party to the idea that there's going to be a shared dumpster enclosure that they're going to be walking over on their property. And then there's a new, maybe it becomes a Chevron. It doesn't have to be this market. It could be anything else with a brand new tenant, a brand new owner. And then these things fall down the line. And this happens a lot with builders. It's not a huge. I'm for it's not a huge problem, but it's something we try to catch in advance if we can. So I think it's just the things that we think are the most important. I think I was just kind of following up on what Colin was talking about. I want to touch on one thing that I think is important. And I appreciate all the comments from the applicant and their kind of detailed walkthrough there. Review and agreement with the vast majority, I think, of the conditions, aside from the redundant ones. There's probably a handful of items that they're sort of raising objections about. But I think it's one thing where I think there's a. I guess a significant disagreement that I want to point out is this idea of of the conditional use and what that trigger means. What the code says is that those that use the gas station and I say the car wash as well. Are conditional uses because of their proximity to the residential homes. On the south side of the of the of the Malala. That's true. But when you open up the criteria, and that's the reason I had Colin kind of show the very detailed criteria for conditional use. It's not staff's opinion. I can tell you that that only applies to conditions you apply to the southern portion of this property. Those conditions actually are applied to the entire property. We look at it holistically. And part of the kind of basic reason for that is simply that you can't just say that the gas station is only impacting the bottom, you know, 30 feet or something that they show in their graphic. The service station involves noise, it involves. Cueing, it involves fuel trucks, it involves noise on the back of the building, the front of the site, the people have to go into the convenience store just to pay for their fuel. So it's not that it's just these isolated fueling stations that we apply conditions to, and they're only applicable. To the people on the south side or to mitigate impacts to the people on the south side of the road. We respectfully disagree with the applicant to that. We think that the codes is just the opposite. The conditional use provisions read that the proposed use shall be compatible with the surrounding properties. That's the third criteria, the surrounding properties, not just those properties to the to the south. It's that element that triggers the condition use process, and then you must meet all of the conditional use criteria. Which is the reason we think that it needs to be compatible with the surrounding apartments as well. And we think that these are pretty reasonable conditions about landscaping that we have in there that's consistent with what you see next door. In fact, there's there are trees on the other side of the sidewalk, on the north side of the sidewalk that the apartment put in. And there's no reason that the service station couldn't put those in as well. We think it's a little more intense use than the apartment complex on its own. So we spent a lot of time going through these. We actually worked through with the applicant to carve these down as much as we as much as could, but we honestly. Staff really believes that these are pretty reasonable conditions. We think that they get to the heart of kind of mitigating these impacts. We're trying to soften it and make it compatible as best we can. And I know our. City attorney has one finding he wants to wants to add, which I think is important. And I think it gets to the heart of this condition to use. Item that we're talking about because it's an important issue. Do you mind?
No, not at all. So I'll just read the proposed finding into the record. But this is just kind of a slightly more detailed analysis of what Director Kerr was just explaining there. So the conditional use provision, which table 2.03A lists automotive maintenance and gasoline stations, including repair services as conditional use. Within the commercial general zone, it's within 200 feet of residentially zoned properties. So. We all agree that this property is within 200 feet of residentially zoned properties to the south. But and I'll kind of go on here. The proposed gas station and convenience store here is within that 200 foot radius. And it also includes properties, including those properties across the wall road. But there are also 400 and I had 58, but I think Colin said 78 apartments. 78, yeah, 478 apartments. I think we're estimating about 1,000 individuals would be living when they're at capacity in the Woodburn Place and Woodburn Place West developments. And the applicant in their application sought to consolidate their development application into a proposal that includes a design review, what you've seen, and the conditional use application. And when we do consolidated design reviews or consolidated reviews, the city's policy is not to segment that development design review into discrete parts in a manner that would preclude comprehensive review of the entire development and its cumulative impacts. And that's coming from WDO 4.01 dot 07. And so here, the proposed development includes mixed uses, right? We've got a gas station, a car wash. And those are conditional uses under the city zoning code. And then you've got a convenience store, which if it was standing alone, would be permitted outright as an outright use in the commercial general zone. But in this circumstance, the mixed uses on the property are tied together under a singular business model, each reliant on the other components and benefiting from their assembled presence on a singular site. It's reasonable to assume that individuals who are going to fueling islands are also going to go into the convenience store, whether it's to pay for their gasoline, buy some food or beverage, use the restrooms. There are lots of reasons why one might when you're fueling up. And the city is not required to identify a sub area of the property as the gas, like the the gas station site, and consider the impacts based on that smaller site. What we're required to do is look at the impacts of the site as a whole on the surrounding uses. And I believe the language in the code, the WDO, yeah, it's shall be compatible with surrounding properties. So it's not surrounding zones, it's surrounding properties. So notwithstanding the fact that the conditional use is triggered by 200 feet south of Malala Road, there being residences, once that's triggered, you go through the full list of criteria, and that says shall be compatible with the surrounding properties. And of course, these apartments that surround this literally surround the proposed development. The uses together have grouped impact and generally can't be separated. In particular, and is evident from the traffic impact analysis, the traffic impacts from the site as a whole consider and incorporate all of the site uses. And for that reason, it's reasonable for the city in evaluating the impacts from the proposed gas station and car wash to assume and condition the reasonable convenience store impacts along with other uses. And furthermore, the city has reviewed and considered impacts of mixed uses on the site to the surrounding properties and the full extent of the property lines in its evaluation. It's a long time.
I appreciate that. And again, it's getting to this issue of the application of conditional use criteria for the property and what elements that are applicable. And that's an important point.
One question I do have for you is that of the direction of the pumps. I know that they were, so is it said that they have to have a certain direction to enter the into the pumps? I think that was mentioned in one of the images.
Well, there's two entrances in, but they had some arrows.
Arrows, you mean?
Okay, can I answer that question, Chair? So in an earlier draft before staff report went out, one-way striping would have been required, and staff agreed to revise it before the staff report went out. So it's not required and the condition is this worded.
Okay, how many entrances?
Are you talking about something like a driveway?
Yeah.
There's one driveway from the highway, and there's two points of cross axis into Woodburn Place Apartments.
I had a question regarding the wall or the fencing. Is there anything is I'm, I guess, I'd like to know, I mean, is there a position where, is that graffiti to me is, and I that's the first thing I thought of. And so, you know, and I know the applicant addressed it, but in staff's experience, I mean, hedging versus a wall, I mean, where are we with that?
So the applicant does have a landscape plan that shows landscaping in that area, and the WDO requires landscaping generally anyway. The requirement is to also have a wall. There is at least five foot width between the drive-through for the car wash and the property line. And I can also show photos if you're interested. Right next door at the apartments of just past the invisible property line, there's already a very thick buffer of that parking area that's planted with trees and shrubs. So there's plenty of room for a wall and landscaping on the gas station property. And as far as the graffiti, and staff has heard this from occasion from other applicants for other projects, I've not given it much credence, particularly in this case, because with the landscaping that exists on the apartment's property and this property where landscaping is proposed, it would be thick enough that I don't think that even if a wall was tagged, anyone could see the graffiti, because there'd be so much short rate.
So we are doing both, well, and that's what I wanted to verify.
That's what the approval with conditions is anticipating, yes.
If I could add to that just a little bit. So the applicant, I think, said that part of why they want to do the vegetative screening is because you can partially see through it, and that helps with safety. I generally agree with that. But as you'll see in the findings, part of why the city is looking to have this wall put in there is specifically for the headlamps of cars that are queuing to go through that car wash. So if you're in one of those apartments or if you're next door, and I think that had something as well to do with the height that was proposed for that wall. So vegetative screen, if you can partly see through it, those lights are still, in theory, is going to be going to be shining through. So we feel more comfortable with having a better screen for those apartments that are there next door.
Before wrapping up, Commissioner Bartel, do you have some last minute questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so with that, I want to close. First time using gavel here. So with that, thank you for your testimony, and we'll be able to deliberate now.
If you guys want me to, I I think they're minor enough where I'm okay with recommendations from staff. I don't feel like they're asking a lot here. And I am confident that there's going to be a smooth transition between you guys and our staff. And so I, okay, we'll follow in the recommendations.
I agree, I agree with what Dev said. I think, you know, what we've got, the WDO, things are there for a reason and for us to, if if we're almost entirely in agreement, then I think personally, I think what we've.
Commissioner Bartel.
Madam Chair, could I just interrupt for a second? It occurs to us that you closed the hearing, but we did not give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. So if you could reopen the hearing for a moment, so that if the applicant does have any rebuttal, we'd like to make sure that they're able to get that into the record.
So I'll open up again the testimony and give the applicant an opportunity.
We'll be really brief, and we appreciate staff's testimony. Zach Pels with AKS. I guess the just the one thing we would like to just clarify on the record is which, it sounded like there were, staff was agreeable to some of those requests that we made. Maybe if we could take a minute to just go through which of those conditions staff is agreeable to? Which of those revisions that we're requesting staff is agreeable to?
I guess as it stands, at the beginning, it was staff right off the bat was willing to revise the transportation condition to require a lesser amount of money towards that right turn lane.
DKS associates, the name you're using.
That's correct.
And you said you had some language for that.
If you want to see it, I have a slide prepared for that, yes.
Did you also mention Colin?
Oh, I think I understand your question.
The circulation.
As if the commission's inclined, staff is more inclined to concede on the condition about, oh, CU1, which is regarding the frontage, essentially to revise it to better reflect the actual situation on the ground rather than what the site plan showed. So the applicant would still be required to plant street trees and lawn grass. Yeah, there'd be no physical change to the sidewalk.
Are you talking about the fort trees and the shrubs?
No, not the front yard landscaping.
This is condition CU1.
That's correct.
CU1, okay.
Correct.
Commissioners, if I may make a suggestion, it might be easier to follow since we're talking about the conditions that we're in dispute over. If you grab the the letter that was submitted today, they're pretty clearly laid out in there, so you can go through and and get to them pretty quickly.
All right, I'll try and finish up the list to answer Mr. Pels's question. Staff's also agreeable to amending CU6 to allow the fuel pump canopy to be 16 feet high instead of 14 and a half. CU9, the portion regarding the requirement to have two trash receptacles, staff would be okay with striking that. And then what remains of the same CU9 condition relating to queuing of vehicles at the fuel pumps, staff would be willing to scale back or remove it, the fuel pump queuing regulation altogether.
To tell you, if you are you expecting me to draft a motion with that?
Oh, okay.
All right, why don't we start with CU, condition CU1, as it's worded in the staff report, page?
CU1A.
Thank you, page nine.
Oh, I thought you said, look at the letter, okay.
Oh, nine of eighteen.
Page nine of the main body of the staff report, condition CU1. I think to accommodate what the applicant's looking for, we'd basically revise A and C to basically probably say something like what's out there today is oh, perfectly okay, keep it as it is. And then to keep B requiring street trees and the rest of the landscaping required for the planter strip. Did I make it clear? Okay. So CU1, parts A and C, we will revise them to say something to the effect of what's sidewalk and planter strip widths are out there today are okay. Please keep them as they are, applicant. And part B would stay as it is.
Part B, what stay as is?
Yes.
Landscaping inside, okay. Sorry.
Okay, then we'll move on then to condition CU6, which is about the fuel pump canopy height, and that is on page 11. That'd be under subsection A2. And that'd be a simple matter of changing the number 14.5 to 16. And if I may, we'll move on to CU9 on page 14 regarding the trash cans. So this would be subsection 2 of that condition. And basically, the proposal would be to strike part 2 altogether. And also with in condition CU9 to scale.
I'm sorry, so strike, just strike paragraph 2 trash, just strike that whole paragraph.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
And then depending whether or not the commission has an opinion about part 3, which is the vehicular circulation, the queuing, we could scale it back as staff, or we could just strike it altogether, part 3.
Personally, my opinion is I don't see a problem with it. I've heard about anyone else.
What was staff's reasoning again?
We're inclined to keep it naturally, because we're recommending it. But if the commission has different ideas, we can work with that.
What does scaling back look like?
Ask for less and make the condition shorter.
I guess my question was, was it a safety thing? Do you guys feel a better flow? Was it a safety thing? What was the reasoning behind?
A number of things, to prevent any possible overflow into the highway, to prevent frustration among the drivers negotiating with each other on the site. And in today's environment, where there's both self-service and pumping by attendance, where we've seen other gas stations demarcate some pumps for self-serve and some for attendance to make sure it's not a totally confused free-for-all for the drivers, that people know where they're supposed to go when they get to a pump, and can choose one fairly quickly and easily.
Personally, I like things that tell me where to go. I mean, I can figure out myself what side my my gas tank is on, but and then act accordingly.
Yeah, and I add that normally we do trust developers to know what they need to do for operations of their site. On the other hand, because it is a conditional use very close to residences, and problems could arise, a staff would like to have something to be able to address a potential problem if it arises.
I'm leaving it as is. I don't know if anybody has any opinion.
I agree with leaving it as is.
It doesn't dictate how, what direction or the arrows need to point. They they can decide as long as there's arrows to show movement. Okay. I'm good with letting them choose the direction, but arrows are always a nice visual.
And even marking the pump self and to serve and self-serve and service.
No more staff comment at the moment.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Very much.
And with that, I close comment, and we can deliberate. Continue to do the preparations. Commissioner Bartel, I don't want to miss you.
Sure. I don't have any further questions. I think the explanations on all sides have have helped me understand what is being asked.
There will be a wall and which would, at least from what the designs are, probably decrease some of the noises. Vacuum would be the latter one. Were were the hours all the same across?
Yeah.
I think seven to nine. But that would get in much of that. But there would get too much of that.
I mean, the apartment, I think, I think my thinking on it is also the apartments, for example, you tend to have a noise, curfew, and my thinking is that they are usually at 10, so my inclination would be to leave it at 9. But again, open for everyone's thoughts.
Well, I think, I don't even think that's something where.
No.
Right. I mean, we can't do much about it. It's like that woman said, so.
If anything, my thinking is I actually like the idea of mentioning that we do need a trash if in case it does change ownership, as they were mentioning, and it, there is. Oh, just one? Okay.
Change it from 2 to 1.
Was that a 2 to 1 or, or was that striking it on the CU9 number 2?
I think isn't that just the garbage cans, the individual garbage cans, but I think my concern is more if they're planning to share the garbage area for the apartments, I'm, I'm not super comfortable with that. I think every commercial establishment entity should have their own.
Uh, if I may speak to that, Commissioner Bartel, there's a different condition in the design review section that addresses the, if they need a trash enclosure in the future, they have to have one. That's not part of, uh, the CU9 condition. The CU9 one is about two smaller receptacles for people on foot.
She keeps CU9. I don't think we should delete it. How, where does it mention the contribution to off-site improvement? What paragraph is that?
Uh, page 17, under the blue bar, condition T dash A. Page 17.
Yeah. So all we do is we just change it to 2.3% or something? Was that it?
Uh, I believe the memo says 2.27%. And the condition refers to another document that's a table of fees and the fee amount would change from what it is proposed, which is a little over $66,000, to the correct figure of, oh, wait, I have the slide. Hold on while I share the slide. So on the screen you see essentially what the condition would read, the percentage would change, and the note at the bottom indicates that in their fee schedule, the absolute dollar amounts would also fall by about half to reflect the 2.27%.
Do we need further deliberation or are we getting ready for a motion?
Well, I, I have a motion. I mean, part of a motion.
If it helps, um, we'd be looking, it sounds like you're looking for a motion to approve the conditions. So if you want to change anything, the focus would be on what do you want to change from what's written? And then we can help you with that.
I'm sorry? Last part of what you just said?
We can help you with that.
Okay, all right. So, uh, can I, sorry. Uh, I move the planning commission approve the applications for US market, 2115 Molalla Road, conditional use 24-01, with design review 24-01, property line adjustment 24-02, subject to the provisions of the staff report. Revising paragraph CU1A and C to retain current landscaping and sidewalk. Uh, revising paragraph CU6A2, maximum ceiling height 16 feet, and revising conditional use 24-01 transportation. And there's where I need help.
I'd, I would suggest something wording like revising condition T dash A pursuant to the slide presentation.
Okay, pursuant to the slide presentation.
Slide 46.
And a, um, order be prepared for the signature of the chair.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah. That includes one, yeah.
That includes all the conditions and with the changes that she named, yes.
It's all the same except for these three.
Yes. Okay, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so motion passes. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get us closed up 9/11 here. Um, is there any other business from the commission? No, no staff updates?
Uh, I just wanted to give a, a couple of quick updates on the council meeting we had on Monday evening.
Say that again. Thank you.
Try that again. I'm trying to get further away. It doesn't seem to be helping. Hold on for one second. Let me try from up here. How's that? Just a quick update on the council meeting they had on Monday evening. Couple planning commission, uh, items that you worked on were on it. First, uh, there was, as you know, you made a recommendation for approval and an annexation, uh, for the Stafford development, that small triangular property. It was just an annexation. There was no development proposed. And we had a pretty detailed annexation agreement with it that sort of ensured that we were getting public improvements in the future when development happened. That went forth. There were no questions. It was pretty easily adopted by the council. So that property is annexed, has a zoning designated, and that the condition remained unchanged. That was put together for the, uh, agreement that they'll be subject to. Think of it like a developer's agreement on that property, and it'll get recorded on the property. The bigger item that they went through, I know that's of interest to all of you, is the, the food cart provisions. Uh, so if you were tracking some of those, uh, so the language that the planning commission proposed, uh, was presented to the council. I don't think we had a single change from the initial proposal here. I'm looking at Colin, maybe something.
I thought you had said the council had made one change from what was in the packet, not to the ordinance from, but from their last meeting.
Yeah, something.
There was a increase in parking, I think, was something.
That was it. They, they wanted to add a parking requirement. I think we came up with two per cart and they made it three. Am I getting that correct?
I believe that's correct.
In the final provision. Now, that's the small change they made. They made, another change was a little larger, so they heard a lot of testimony, and I think that the council, um, we had a pretty, pretty long meeting. They talked about it for pretty close to an hour, and then we came back and talked about it for about another 20 minutes a second time. Um, so the council approved it and sent staff back and said, but we would like you to include some language to allow a single food cart operator to operate outside of this special event permit requirement. So as you know, we currently allow the special event one-off, anybody can drop them anywhere in a commercial industrial district, and they're hard to keep track of, and they don't clean them up, and it's been a problem. So one of the goals overall was to make sure that while we created this pod and the council loved the idea, they like all the provisions in it, they think it's going to be, hoping it's going to be successful like we all are, that we'll get people to come in and take advantage of the new provisions to, to build one of these pods. And they added, they wanted to include a provision to allow an individual cart owner to operate on a site with minimal sort of improvements. You know, the pod requirements are very detailed, right? There's a lot of money to install. You have to install the, the undergrad, you have to install a restroom, you have to install gas lines, you need to pave the whole thing, I need landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. I need a sort of a solid enclosed area of people to eat and the rest of these things, which I think the council felt like was fine for a larger one, right? If you're going to do something massive, it's going to be very permanent, someone's going to develop it, it's going to go sometimes to the planning commission or at least come here. It's a very detailed site plan, they need civil engineering, it's a lot of money and time involved, all fine. I think there was a concern that there would, there were one-off individual carts that we could still allow under certain circumstances. So it's not a carte blanche, but it says that if it's part of another site, so if there's an already developed property, these can be an accessory use, and there's still requirements for having some covered seating areas, they still have to go through the, the health department requirements. I think they still have a separate parking requirement, um, and a few other things, but it gets rid of some of the, the, the larger costs that were involved. That was the biggest change they made. Yeah.
Business unless they do one or the other.
It will. So if you are, a lot of them, all, all the ones that are legally operating are operating under a special event permit, right? Which is good for a certain amount of, but it will expire, right? So we don't come out tomorrow, or as soon as the ordinance is official, it doesn't mean they can't operate. They can keep operating until that special event permit ends. So give it about three months, right? And those are eventually, every cart you see in town is going to go through this other process. And there's a couple provisions to that that, um, again, I, I think are, are going to help things, um, overall.
Think that the individual ones will not take, well, take advantage. They'll feel that they're being taken advantage of with having to install all the stuff and all of that. I mean, if you can just do a one-off.
You can. That's, and that, I mean, it was, the council talked about it a lot, and I think they heard from people. Um, I mean, they gave a couple of examples of, you know, the, I'm thinking of, as an example, because he testified, it's public information. A gentleman has the barbecue place open at the, let's say, the north southwest corner of 99, uh, 214, over sort of in the same shopping center as the, what's the credit union that's in front of it, right? What's the name of that? Right, in the mega food coastal, in that parking lot. So he had operated, he was operating there, right? He had a parking area, it's sort of a big oversized parking lot. He said, I don't know, it seems that this could be an appropriate use here that I could utilize. So that, I think they, council wanted to be very sensitive to opening the door and allowing these individual carts to come in. Again, some minimal requirements, slightly lower bar. They can't operate on vacant sites, which is really important, on a vacant property. So you couldn't just drop one on a vacant site. And that's why I mentioned this idea, that it must be an accessory use. So it has to be something else on the property, and this is just, oh, and we're going to have this food cart someplace else.
We're limiting it, so are we going to get a bunch of carts like a Walmart now or?
So you could get one.
Just so.
Yeah, yeah, you can get one at the Walmart. And I should, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned it. So the idea is there's these one-offs that they can come in.
Are they dealing with Walmart or are they just, uh, allowed a corner Walmart parking lot?
So we would require, it's an actual application, there's a fee, they need authorization from the owner, they're going to have to show it on a site plan. There's, again, there are some requirements, more than we have now, which is nice. And again, we still, there's still an opportunity for these special event permits. They don't get the last 90 days or 60 days, and you can only open them on Saturday. This idea that they were dragging forever, uh, so those changes are really important. So we still allow those, but they're for a shorter time period, and the best thing about them is every night you get to pack it up, close it in, right? You can't, it's not something that just lingers there, and it's like, well, our doors are closed, so we don't pick it up. It's, and that'll be important. So I think it's a, I think it's a good step. Um, I think the council really likes the pod idea, and I hope those are successful. Uh, but there was just a bit of a, bit of a carve-back on the idea of the single cart. I think they were very sympathetic, and they were hearing, I mean, reasonable stories, people saying, that's going to be so expensive, I'll never be able to open my cart in town because I can't wait for a pod to open. They may. Uh, that was a, I mean, it's a legitimate concern. They said, you know, so I have to wait for someone to open a pod, then the pod's going to be three grand a month, and I don't have that. Can't I do something on a smaller scale for a one? And I think they wanted to open that. Once we build one, we can charge what we want. So, but all positive, I mean, I, and I say this to the council all the time, our, our codes are imperfect in many ways. And every time we write something, it's always good for us to honestly, I want it to come back in 18 months, and if there isn't a single pod built anywhere, say, yeah, maybe we better reevaluate that code. Maybe it was too restrictive. Maybe we didn't put it in the right spot. Well, think about it. How's that? I would rather have a, again, I, we're pretty good at writing code, and you all did a great job on it, but again, I, I listen to the market, right? If I write a pod language and say, that's what you got to build, and everybody says, well, ain't nobody going to build that, then maybe we should revisit it. That's all. We can always come back and look at it again. Let's see how it goes. We have had interest, actually, from people looking to construct a pod in town.
What about that pod on 214 in Settlemeier? What is that?
They are, they are, think of them as existing non-conforming because they're operating under our current code, the code that's been in place for many, many years. It says you can basically only have them in industrial areas, and it's sort of the way that that one's being developed. Now, we're sort of fortunate in that they are now coming through because of the health code changes that said you had to have like a restroom and a place to wash your hands. They've had to build a restroom, right? So now they need, they've come into the city, and they're actually going through a process that's going to make that site, it's going to significantly clean up that site, um, because they're going to have to put in a restroom. They're putting in, I think they're putting in gas, they're definitely putting in, uh, uh, some kind of utilities around the site. I don't know if it's gas for everyone, but it might be. And most importantly, this is the one off, this is the one at, uh, is it, uh, no, Progress, Industrial Way, um, and. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, so I'm sorry, I was, I was totally, pardon me.
Oh, but you're saying they are going to do that?
Yeah, they're in right now to do something to sort of clean up their site, and the health department's required that. There's a lot of, there are some buildings up there that don't have permits that we're hoping to bring in and get permitted, um, which would be nice. That's going to be a, a very good, that's a positive. They're not going to meet the new pod requirements and are required to. That's not something we can do, but they are going to be meeting some other requirements to be had.
And they're not meeting it because they're on industrial?
That's correct. They're not meeting it because the current code allows that to operate exactly as it's operating, which is why we wanted to fix, I didn't, I, unless that's a great, the one in industrial. I'm sorry. The Settlemeier one, um, is an example of.
Part of the market, you know.
Uh, you mean, yeah, part of it was Sunrise Market. Yeah, and they came and testified, I think, at the council as well. They were here. Um, that, so that could be an example of an accessory use, that if they make some changes, and they have it like on, you know, they have the parking and some of these other kind of pieces they have in there, that could continue operating there as an accessory to that, to that center, and you could have one there.
You know.
You know, we make sausage, and we all get everything we want, but I think it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty good solution. I feel better about it. My issues were always, I appreciate one of the counselors actually said, we want to make sure that some of the code issues we've been having are getting rectified with this, and I think that's true.
It's a process too. I mean, once we do get those pods in, the market will also decide, and so there will be shifts long-term.
Pods, I like that plural. Yeah, we all want to see one. It would be, would be a really good thing. I'm sorry. Those are my only updates. Uh, we do not have a meeting scheduled or anything scheduled for the August 8th meeting. We will be having an August 25th. I didn't bring mine.
22nd for the other gas station.
Sorry, 22nd. That will be a gas station, that will be another gas station, the one at Oregon Way and 214. You're, a lot of you remember, it is the same, it's an applicant, no, not the same as the people who are here. No, this is a, this is a, an application that the city went through, and we'll give you a, some background.
It is also a.
It's the same one.
So it's, it's also a space age, but it's not the same owner.
That's correct.
Same branding, but different, everything else.
Different site, you shouldn't think of them the same. They had gone through a process before, and because our, so, so we'll probably cover this, but if you submit an application in our code and you get denied, uh, there's a waiting period before you can come back and resubmit. That keeps people from just ramming things through until they get, and they waited their year. Well, we'll discuss that when we have our hearing. I can't talk too much about it. Uh, there are some changes, and it was denied previously, and it went to Lubin, it was denied there previously. Yes, it was. Thank you. That will be a big meeting, by the way. I, I'm not, I don't have anything else on that meeting. I'm expecting a crowd.
Bring a snack.
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move for adjourn.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None?
Thanks for bearing with us, Deb. Sorry we had trouble.
Yeah.